Kind of shocking, it was extremely disappointing and for my two cents, I'd like to be on record here as saying, I hope that we're not being given this level of service we are because we don't have a choice. I'd like to think that somewhere along the way, the organization's going to figure out that you need to run like every other company in the country and concern yourself with the customers and with making money and figuring out the best way to make those two coincide. That's it, thank you.
We've got the underground cable injection and replacement programs. Those have been going on a number of years. They're increased every year, so that's probably the most tangible proactive thing that we do is identify those sections of cables that have had numerous faults or can be injected or replaced. So that's where we're putting a lot of the preventative money. The overhead equipment, like I said, it's inspected, we look for the wire that's, you know, either giving us trouble, come down, we'll replace that. Leaning poles, we'll identify those and get those attended to. I mean, there are, like I said, inspections done on the circuits and then the programmatic work that matches those problems is issued prior to the next summer season.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
How often are they inspected?
Inspected on a two-year cycle, either by thermal scanning, the overhead lines. The underground lines, the pad mounted transformers, there's really no inspection that can be done, you know, a visual inspection of an underground cable, impossible. Transformers can be opened up and looked at, there's no moving parts in the overhead transformers or the pad mounted transformers, so there's really no protocol to go through and inspect, you know, the operation of the transformer. You know, they'll run indefinitely if they're not overloaded or infiltrated by an animal, flooded, something along those lines.
I sit here and see you saying that you're more focusing on underground cables. I sit here and twice now you've said focus on underground cables. I'm telling you, this whole entire area that's most affected and the other area is overhead, okay? Overhead. It seems like there isn't enough. When was the last time we spent money in Wooddale on overhead? And could you tell me dollar amount that we spent on overhead replacement in Wooddale and how many years ago we did that?
I'd have to get that kind of information of what we've done on the overhead.
Well, I would like to see that if you could provide that with me down the line, I would like to see that because I'll tell you one thing, I don't think there's enough being spent on overhead in our community. It just seems like we focusing more, and I'm not knocking the people that are losing power underground, I'm not saying that, but it just seems like all our businesses that are, a lot of them are on this end of town here, is overhead and we losing it constantly. So I think what you're focusing in, and what I'm getting out of the meeting tonight, is you're mainly focusing on, you have a program for the underground cables, but I don't see you us producing enough programs for the overhead cables in that issue. So I would like to see where we could increase the service and also keep the underground going too, increase the service more on overhead knowing that the businesses in the community, and you heard it from these people, some of these businesses lost forty, fifty thousand dollars that the insurance company ain't paying for. And if they lose power constantly like the other day, no rain at all, sunny can be, we lose it for three hours in the area, there's a problem with that overhead. And I think we need to focus more in the community with overhead and not through the underground too, but you gotta knock that one down first. But I really like to see how much money you sunk into Wooddale in the past year in repairs, was it overhead or underground and dollar amount? I really would like to see that because I'll tell you one thing, I don't think there's been a lot of money spent in this community. I agree several years ago before I came on, I agree with Dan, there wasn't a problem. And all of a sudden, it's like, okay, we took care of this fireball here, let's move on and we create another fireball. So now, more or less, you're going to take this information back hopefully and you pass this info on, we get some reaction and I just hope that it pleases for a couple of years and then we not back here again saying, well, what happened three years ago now? I mean, I thought there was ongoing thing here and I don't know where the connection is, so that's it. Thank you.
I'm going to take just two more comments and we'll close it. Alderman Lewitin was first and Alderman Christine Winger.
I would say about the second most common comment from people I talked to over the last three days has been that the overhead is dangerous, that there are too many wires that are caught in trees, that are bending over and particularly one area on the east side of Walnut, they told me that the branches are hanging into the wires and nobody gets back there to do it and there is no alley. The people are abutted to each other in the back, so there's no alleyway to go down. So if you had your trucks with all the fences, you'd have to go around, come in, go out, go around and come in, you'd have to work in their backyards. And I don't see that being done. These people have said they haven't seen you for umpteen number of years, nobody knew exactly when, exactly to pinpoint it to me. I'm going to ask you a question. Have you ever worked with a city to take down trees? I mean, most cities, this city, we have a public works department. Would you ever think of letting the local community which sees all the problems, take the calls to police station, have them turned over to public works and have public works bill you for the work as an outside contractor?
For tree removals?
Tree trimming, I don't want to take the trees out, I'm talking about tree trimming around the wires.
Our contractors do that on a...
Well, obviously, they're not here. My question is, can you contract with cities to do that directly through public works departments?
That's an option that would need to be explored with our company. I know that there are contracts with the tree trimming organizations and whether we could introduce another party into that operation.
I mean, I may be wrong, I didn't talk to anybody, it may be too dangerous for us to do, but is there a way that we can be a coordinator with your contractors where we get a call in that there's a dangerous situation, the trees are causing a problem or your wires have started to dip down? Is there a way that we have the authority to call your contractor and say, 225 North Walnut, get it, mark it down and give us a date to fix it, to get in there? Is there a way that we can be in an intermediary and get involved with tree trimming? And look, you got overhead, you've got thirteen in one year. Maybe we would have had thirteen calls, we would have had them taken care of and you would have had three calls. Is there a way to integrate, and I don't think we want to do it for free, but is there a way to get integrated with our service departments to do some intervention?
Best way to handle that is either the, if the customer sees an abnormal condition, either unsafe or something with the lines in a tree, call in the customer service, have a tree trimming inquiry made, documented, and then yourself or Jeff or Wally could contact me and I could work internally to have that ticket addressed and have the, you know, whatever the concern is addressed. Couple things on tree trimming, we maintain the clearance on the primary lines, the high voltage lines in the backyards and on the streets, so we're trimming to provide clearance for those lines. The overhead line that runs from the pole to the house, the trimming of that line is the responsibility of the homeowner. So either they can have it done, they can have a contractor do it. If the contractor feels that they don't want to do it with the line live, they can contact us and we'll come out and disconnect it, take it off to the side so the contractor can do that work in the backyard. That's just the line from the pole in the back to the house, that secondary drop. When that work is done, we would come back and reconnect it, so there'd be a brief interruption while that work was being done. But if there's something, you know, a tree growing up into the primary lines in the backyard, a tree branch either on the line or near the line, call to the 800 number, report it and, you know, vegetation management crew would come out and address it.
Okay. I think I can summarize what you said was have somebody in the city act as a contact person for that ticket number so we can follow up and see that it's done within, we have to agree on what is a reasonable time.
And I get those calls periodically from municipalities. Hey John, you know, Mrs. Jones, you know, says there's a tree branch hanging over her, the line in her backyard, ticket's been called in, I'll contact vegetation management and say, hey, you know, you guys have this ticket in your queue, would you, you know, please go out and address it?
Okay, that's good. Maybe, Wally, is that something that you could work with? Maybe two can talk about it, you know, after the meeting to set something up like that, that's a positive idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Winger.
Yeah, the tail end of that is essentially what I was going to touch on. So I see that your title, Mr. O'Halloran, is ComEd External Affairs Manager. And does that mean that you are our client representative for the types of issues as just discussed or, you know, the numerous lights that are out and calling in the ticket over and over again? Then will we go to you? Is that the process that you expect or is there another client manager that we would be in close communication with?
It would be myself for that follow-up. The first step is to make the company aware of it. So we've got the customer service number for outages, tree questions, any inquiry, the best bet is to always call it in the 800 number, get it documented in the system, it gets a ticket generated to the proper party. And then, you know, I can follow up internally on these types of things.
Okay, and then, secondly, what level of communication can we expect from you? So if there's a continual problem that will call you, you'll get back to us within a day or what expectations can we set?
Either phone or email, usually with Wally, sometimes with Jeff, you know, as soon as I can get back with some information, basically. I mean, I've got channels to different people within the company and, you know, occasionally there's, you know, investigation has to be done, there's, you know, things that need to take place before I can get the information back, but as soon as I get that, I get back as quick as I can.
Okay, or for instance, the numbers on the improvements that have taken place underground and then overground in the past year, that how long would something like that take to compile and then feed into Jeff or Wally?
What I'd recommend is between Jeff and Wally, collect the specifics that you guys have, you know, those addresses, provide them to me, I'll get with Reliability Engineering Group, they're the ones that manage the reliability programs, the cable replacement, the overhead inspections, that type of thing. And then thirty, you know, forty days, something like that, to get a, you know, comprehensive look at what's been done, what's planned for next year. We're at that point of the year now where we're starting to get the work plans together for next year. We've monitored the performance of each circuit throughout the year and we've identified those that aren't performing where we'd like them to be. So between now and the end of the year, those lists are finalized and the field engineers do their reviews to see what needs to be done to, you know, improve the performance on this circuit, that circuit, this circuit. They draw up those work orders and then they go into the schedule for work next spring, basically, before summer 2011.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Halloran, for listening to us. Oh, did I say you were going to have a chance to go ahead? Alderman Roy Wesley, Assistant.
You said that we get credit for streetlights that are out. Brad, have we seen it on our bills? Because I haven't seen it and I've always asked the question.
In my understanding is there's two different types of streetlights that we have with ComEd, one's on the wooden poles and one's on like concrete or metal poles, I think. And depending on which type of streetlight it is, some were billed just kilowatt hours, so however much it runs, that's what we get billed for. And the others, there are, it's just a monthly rental fee. So I'd have to go through and see if those are ones we're billed kilowatt hours for or ones that we're actually billed a rental fee for. The kilowatt hours though, especially in the summer, early on for probably what, seven, eight hours, so it's not, I think they're pretty low wattage bulbs, I don't think they draw a lot, but we can certainly look into that for you.
Okay, so my question is, we have a list of streetlights that are out, you get a list of this and when ComEd goes out and repairs them, they don't notify us that it's been repaired sometimes. So how does ComEd do the billing on this if they don't tell us that it's fixed, if you give us credit or not?
There's a service order generated when the lights reported, so at that point, it ties back to the account and it, it's noted as out of service and then when that service order's closed back out, put back in service, then that interim period ends and then that credit is accrued on the bill.
Okay, Brad, I would like to see that on the next bill if possible.
Okay, are you done?
Nope.
No.
I have a problem, when you call the 800 number, it gets transferred to where?
We've got two local call centers, one down in Oakbrook, one in the city of Chicago.
Doesn't get transferred out of state?
Only in a large storm event would we open up, would we tie into our call center at our sister utility in Pennsylvania.
This is where I have the problem. When you call the 800 number, you report the outage and he says, okay, we're aware of it, repaired in two hours. Two hours come by, business could operate, thinks that it's going to open up in two hours. Call back, two hours are up, nothing. Oh, another four hours. Four hours goes by, nothing. Now we're at three days. That's the problem. And sometimes I think this is, just like a lot of other businesses, you got upper management, but you don't have enough people on the bottom. Before you used to have two-man crews and now you're down to one-man crews. And like my brother said, my dad's been there thirty-four years and it was two-man crew. You could do a lot more with two for underground than you could with one. And, you know, that's, people that are on oxygen and medical thing, if you say two hours, they could live with that, but if it goes twenty hours, twenty-four hours, that person could die. Who's going to be responsible? Is it going to be John that's going to be responsible? I don't think so.
And granted, those are difficult situations that, I mean, the customer's got a certain responsibility. I mean, we've got the responsibility to try to give as accurate, as accurate an estimated restoration time and then the customer's got the responsibility to make a decision based on that. Large-scale storm event, the estimated restoration times are difficult to provide in that first twenty-four hours, so that's often the cause of those sliding times. We try to get out ahead of that as much as we can by saying, you know, a large storm went through, we're expecting, you know, restoration to take a number of days, just to give people an impression that, hey, we might not be up in twenty-four hours, it might be thirty-six hours.
You talk about being informed with the city and stuff, communication there. That's another, where another problem is, when you're saying two hours for the businesses, you're notifying the city that it's going to be up in two hours, the police dispatch so they're informed. That didn't happen with this storm. Our dispatchers were being told a couple hours, five, six hours, and it was three days. It's bad when the city is being told one thing and we have to tell our residents the same thing that we're hearing from you. We don't look good and I'm telling you, you're not going to look good either. And that's not acceptable.
I understand.
So, and I'm going to sit here and fight for every resident in the city of Wooddale and I'm going to come after you every single time when this, if this happens again, so.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, again, Mr. O'Halloran, we thank you for your time. I think we've given you a lot to go back to ComEd with and tell them what our feelings are. Just two other things, if I may. We have a manager, an assistant city manager who are busy running the city and I would not want them to have to take their time up for these records you're talking about. Could you supply us, let's say on a quarterly basis, with a listing of the circuits and how many outages in each circuit on a quarterly basis? You mentioned you had this information, so if you could just have it print up, sent or emailed to our manager so we could kind of look at it and follow it along?
Yeah, we should be able to pull quarterly updates. It's just a matter of, I mean, we run the annual report on an annual basis, so it's just a matter of having the group that draws that information, you know, just request them to draw it for Wooddale.
We'd appreciate it very much if you could do that. And by the way, you did leave out some circuits evidently that match up with Itasca because where I live in Wooddale isn't in one of these circuits and I did lose about two months supply of my insulin and I'd like to see what's happening with that circuit as well. And it's on the west side by Mill Road and it's not listed on here. So again, thank you for your time, we appreciate it. Please go back and scream and yell for us, appreciate it.
Definitely, thank you.
Next item is to be discussed at future meetings. Approval of the ACS contract for TraxGuard, suspension of driver's licenses and the adjudication of parking tickets. And also, I'd like to add to that, the chief of police isn't here tonight, but to talk about the changes he would like to make in the liquor code, we can do that sometime in, let's see, this is like end of August and perhaps first part of October. Have I got that? Anything else to be added to that? Okay, I make a motion to adjourn the public health. Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes, thank goodness.
I'm going to take a five-minute and only a five-minute recess before starting the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee meeting, so use your time. Five minutes is up.
Will the minute taker please show all same members present with the exception of Alderman Lewitin? I will make a motion to approve the minutes of meeting dated July 22, 2010. Is there a second?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right, the next item is a report and recommendation and amortization schedule for signs in Wooddale. It was Alderman Roy Wesley that requested this be placed on an agenda and with that, Mr. Forrest, if you could maybe give us a brief history, but I think it's going to come down to very simply, do we think we should give businesses in town another year extension on when they need to eliminate pole signs and install the new lower style signs? Go ahead, Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, that's correct. Several weeks ago, staff brought forward for your consideration a proposal to exempt businesses in the Thorndale Corridor from the amortization schedule of the sign ordinance. This was initiated due to a business owner up there needing to change some signage, but being aware of the Thorndale Corridor study, he didn't want to spend twenty-five thousand dollars replacing a sign to make it compliant to the sign ordinance and then having to have it removed within a couple of years. So that discussion went into the realm of, well, you know, the committee had the thought to extend the amortization schedule for all businesses in Wooddale due to the continued downturn in the economy. So we did talk to the city attorney. Their office felt that since the approval of the exemption for the signs in the Thorndale Corridor, the ordinance would not be coming to you until next week's city council meeting. If the committee decided that they wanted to add another year to extend the time for compliance to the sign ordinance to all businesses in town, they would still have time to include that in the ordinance. So if you decide you want to go that way, we would, you know, initially recommend all the existing signs, pole signs in Wooddale, extend that from June of 2011 till June of 2012. And in the Thorndale Corridor study area, have that extended to December 31 of 2014.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Forrest. So basically, what we're talking about is the rest of the city here this evening and honestly, I don't feel this is a particularly easy decision. We've got some business owners in town who have complied, they were under the impression that they had a certain period of time in which to comply. We also know we have a difficult economy and businesses are struggling right now, so, you know, you have to ask yourself, is it unfair or is it worthy to consider extending this? So with that, so we don't have to necessarily beat this into the ground, I think everybody has their opinion, you're welcome to share it, but I'd like to just go ahead and make the motion to extend this amortization schedule one more year. I'll look for a second and then call the question.
So move.
All right. Anybody want to make any comments, statements?
Yes.
Ask questions? Alderman Wesley?
I was really looking for two years on this. With the economy how it is, we don't know where it's going. So far, it's going south and it's continued going south. So what are we going to do, revisit this again in another six months or a year?
Well, considering we're nine to ten months ahead of the original amortization schedule, I think it would not be inappropriate to revisit it every year if this in fact passes this evening. Because you're right, we don't know how the economy is going to go. Maybe signs look like it's going to continue in a downward trend, but personally, I'd be concerned about two years being too long. That's not the motion, you know, I think everybody understands your feelings, that's the motion on the floor, if it fails and we'll try for two.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that is the motion for one-year extension, bringing us to, what is it, June of or July of 2012?
June 1 of 2012 for all non-conforming signs and in the Thorndale Corridor study area, December 31 of 2014.
Right, as we discussed at the last committee meeting.
Correct.
Okay, that's the motion. Alderman Wesley?
Now, John, if someone, a new business comes in, they have to apply, they have to go to our signs, right? They cannot put this pole sign up. We are enforcing that, right?
Correct. If a new business comes into town and they're, they want to install a freestanding sign where there's currently not one existing, it would have to be a monument-style sign.
Okay, what if they want to change the facing on the sign on the pole sign? Does that mean that they have to go down to the ground?
No, not for a simple change of face.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then please...